Let's take a second here. Okay, so we are now meeting as Committee of the Whole. I call this meeting to order. Is there any declaration of pecuniary, or declaration of interest? Seeing none, we'll proceed. We have our delegates here?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. We apologize for keeping you waiting so long. Is Pam Hillier? Give us an update on 211 Community Connection. Good afternoon. If you could just push the button, there's a little green button there.
There we go. Mr. Warden, Council, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm going to give you a little quick review of a couple of slides, but really speak to you today about some new services that we're involved with here in Gray County. Three-digit dialing codes are assigned by the CRTC and 211 provides non-emergency, it's a non-emergency helpline for essential services, community services, health, and government programs. So we complement the 911 service for people that are in a crisis but maybe need housing help or access to programs in their community. Things like mental health, dental services for seniors, and utility programs are some of our top needs presented on our help, with our helpline. The 211 dialing service is currently expanded to 74% of Canada, where three provinces are, have full coverage, Ontario, Nova Scotia, and Saskatchewan. And the programs across the United States are sisters and were credited in the same way, so wherever you dial 211, you should get similar service. Here in Ontario, there are six integrated call centers, so I work for Community Connection and we're based in Collingwood. Our catchment area is the green map in the circle, and hence we work with municipalities and many other systems across our region. The funding, that's for 211, this is our base funding for our service, for that green map area. This current year, you can see, is just under $450,000, and we receive the majority of the funding through the Ministry of Children, Community, and Social Services, and the rest through United Ways and municipalities. The funding enables us to have a technical infrastructure that allows our calls to flow across the various call centers to increase our capacity and make us as efficient as possible in call peak periods and things like that. The technology enables us to have a shared resource database across the province and allows us to collect the information on needs and trends. So here in Ontario, obviously, 211 is easy to remember. We have 24/7 service and it's bilingual. We now offer, in addition to phone and T2Y service, we're now offering text access. We have on-demand interpretation in over 150 languages, so that allows us to have a three-way call with someone who chooses to speak in a language other than English or French. We have online search, email, and we've now launched chat service. So we expect our chat service to exceed our calls over the next number of years. So that's all new for us and we're still learning. With 211, there's no geographical boundaries, so citizens can call and get help for their parents that live in Thunder Bay, for example, for support services. Basically, in a nutshell, we do three things, from the call center side, the community resources, so we can connect folks to the services in this community, and then those needs and trends. So three things. So this past year, or last year, I should say, excuse me, in our Central East region, we had about 30,000 contacts, so not too busy, about 120 a day. And our top reasons, as you can see, are health, housing, and support services for families. We've been here serving Gray County for 10 years now, and these are consistently financial assistance, housing, and health have been the top needs. But again, it's really related to the promotion and marketing of services in your community, why people are calling, so it does have some influence on that. The community resource side, here, we have, in our resource database right now, 438 agencies across 561 locations with 662 programs. So our staff contact those organizations at least once a year, and it's probably our largest challenge area, is getting the time from staff at those service providers to give us all the details so that we can provide really effective referrals to their programs and services. We make that information available on our provincial website, 211ontario.ca, and we have also, last year, worked with staff at, here at the county, Bruce County and Gray County, to develop this Bruce-Grey community info site. So staff had some feedback on what kind of categories were in there, and how it would be a search and that. So all of these are kept current as we update our information and contact those agencies. Also this year was, through the newcomer hub was created as part of the Making Gray Bruce Homes project, and we received some funding to do, I think it's a really cool site that translates programs and services in the resource database live, and there's, I think, 20 languages right now. So that's worked out really well, and we would hope to expand on that work in the future. So just a kind of sense of our local initiatives and the work that we do with partners is really related to the value proposition of what we do. So obviously, in the short term, we're the connector to urgent needs, so it's food, financial, crisis intervention supports. We provide prevention and diversion to reduce people phoning around to many places, and making sure they get to the most appropriate level that they need, and resolve barriers by talking to agencies and the staff at agencies to help resolve issues that those people in the community are facing. The longer term is broader interventions to things that are helpful over the long term, like budgeting counseling, or budget counseling, connections to cultural groups, faith communities, volunteering or social activities for those that are isolated. In the systemic side is really our data helps to inform what the needs are in a community, helping to plan those services. And then also, the data on our performance as an organization through our helpline, what we're not able to do, gives us opportunity to have conversations with organizations to create new ways of working together. So in essence, we've really taken our top-down piece, so the provincial-national structure that we have for 211, and then take a bottom-up approach to deepen community engagement, creating local information and referral assistance programs. So what's driving most of these right now is healthcare and the cost to the healthcare system because of poverty and folks that just don't have enough to make ends meet. Last year when I was here, I spoke about the work we're doing in Simcoe County with community paramedicine, where when paramedics go out on either a 911 call or maybe doing a home visit, and they identify a patient that's impacted by the social determinants of health, whether it would be no food in their fridge, or utilities cut off, or hoarding problems, things like that, they make referrals to our 211 system through electronic fax, and then our staff make outbound calls to those patients in the home and see what other programs we can connect them to. So about 50% of those referrals, we're able to enhance and provide connections to other services. So it's very successful, and I'm happy to say we've now launched the Community Paramedicine Referral Service, two months ago, I think, two months ago. And as an example of what we hope to bring back in another year or so here, is that in Simcoe, we were able to demonstrate the reduction of unnecessary calls to 911. They did, the county of Simcoe did a study of patients only referred to 211, followed those for six, pre- and post-six-months periods, and they're able to demonstrate a definite reduction in those repeat calls. The other initiative we're working on here in Gray County is to expand what we call a closed-loop referral partnership for patients impacted by social determinants of health through the primary care system, through your family health teams. And that's where a physician identifies the need, very similar to when a paramedic goes out, but this is in a different context. And they would also send a referral with consent to 211, indicating what they needed. Will our staff phone again, do some assessment, empowerment for those individuals that need that extra help, follow-up with those patients to see, did they get follow-through with those services? Then we create an outcome report, and that gets faxed to the physician and scanned into the electronic medical record. So when that patient comes to the physician again, they can see these other programs and connections that were made, or they could also see the refusal of those services that maybe were recommended or would be a benefit to the patient. So this kind of work we're doing with partners such as paramedics and primary care is what we're calling, is best described as information referral assistance. So it's an in-depth process, more enhanced service for vulnerable people with complex challenges. Consider it as individualized access to that assistance. We do extensive follow-up, advocacy for those folks, and the care and case coordination with service providers. The closed-loop referrals gives us, those outcomes of the interventions that we were able to provide are really useful for helping complex patients move along their continuum of care. So it's a good picture to see here of just brainstorming multiple services and really helping to increase the health equity for those individuals, for accessing multiple services to solve their problems. And one example was a referral from a physician for a gentleman who needed financial assistance to purchase a leg prosthesis. We were able to connect him to assistive devices program and wore amps to get the majority of that, but he was still short. And because we had the relationship with the physician, we were able to contact local charities, write letters, and get that additional funding for that particular gentleman to get access to his new prosthetic leg. So we weren't, we don't, this is where the local relationships really come in, is that when we're able to say, you know, this physician referred this patient to us, it helps those agencies understand that we have that relationship. And then the outcome reporting I mentioned is really, could be useful as we're be able to collect our statistics on that, is did the patient connect with the services? What other needs did we identify that maybe the physician didn't have time to do? Did the services work? Were those, what other referrals and what barriers were identified? So it helps us to continually work with service providers to improve, prove those So, I don't know if there's any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hillier. There are some questions. Brian Milne, first of all, councillor Milne, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. That's all right, I've been called a lot of things. Just don't call me late for lunch. I just wondered, is 211 involved with the evolution of the healthcare system, specifically the Ontario Health Team application or potential application?
Through you, Warden, I, we aren't doing anything here yet. We are involved with six Ontario Health Teams in some way or shape or form across those regions. That's that community piece, it's really helpful.
Councillor Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I just wanted to quickly share a recent experience. I had a gentleman land at my place of business who was homeless, and I called 211, and I was immediately connected with Safe and Sound, and within a half an hour, there was a taxi on its way from Owen Sound to Mifred to pick up the gentleman, and a room was arranged for him in Owen Sound. So I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the service that you provide.
So councillor Robinson.
Thank you. Sort of a last-minute question through you, Mr. Warden. I was wondering if you have the time and capacity, should a lower tier invite you to a council meeting, would you be prepared to provide this information? I just see the value in having that connected with the local communities.
We would love to do that, absolutely.
Councillor Mackie.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and thanks for your program. In your experience, could you share with council where you feel the biggest gaps are in our social security network right now?
There. Would be the top needs are housing, the risk of housing, precarious housing, income, people just not having enough to live on, would be our top two.
Okay, thank you very much. Really appreciate the information, sorry. Oh, Kim, my apologies.
I just want to say, Pam, I remember 10 years ago, when we first started talking about all this stuff, and I just can't give enough kudos to you for what you've been able to do to grow this service from where it was to where it is today. It's an amazing journey, and I think we all owe you a huge debt of gratitude, because I think so much of this was from your own commitment and vision. So thank you.
Serving 12 counties, I must say that it's the staff and the council at those counties is where we're welcomed and get encouraged and given lots of work, so, over here. But it's those staff that really see the value of what we bring, so it's a two-way street for sure. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next delegate is here, John Farmer. Going to give us, speak about violence prevention, Gray Bruce.
Good afternoon, Mr. Warden.
Good afternoon, county council staff.
My name is John Farmer. I have the privilege of being the coordinator for Violence Prevention Gray Bruce, our community coordinating committee for violence against women, and gendered violence prevention and response in Gray and Bruce Counties. Today specifically, I will be introducing our, the work of our committee, the structure of our committee, some of our recent projects, and I also come with a specific request relating to December 6th, which this year marks the 30th anniversary of the shooting at La Cole Firstly, we are a community-based cross-sectoral committee which works to improve community response to victims of domestic violence. Our committee was founded in 1997. It's had a variety of names over that 20-year, 20-year time, and we currently have more than 30 member organizations representing the full spectrum of services, organizations, and community groups that are involved in gendered violence, both prevention and response, so that full, that full spectrum. We have two main goals in our work. One is within the committee to improve collaboration and to make sure that, because so many of the organizations working in Gray and Bruce bridge different parts of our twin counties, and we work together in so many different ways, the work of Violence Prevention Gray Bruce at our tables is to make sure that we're working well together, that we have an opportunity to address common challenges and to make sure that whether someone's calling into service from Tobleroo or from Lucknow, that they are going to have a similar access to a similar quality of support and response. We also work beyond the committee itself to raise public awareness about the issues related to gendered violence, the factors that lead to it, the needs of people who are experiencing it, and the needs of people who have experienced it. Violence Prevention Gray Bruce's work supports the ultimate goal of making our counties a place where all women, children, and people are able to live healthy lives free from violence. Specifically, we work as a committee of a whole, meeting quarterly, and then we have various subcommittees that meet as needed and as their particular projects require. Specifically, we have domestic and sexual violence subcommittees, an anti-human trafficking committee that started a year and a half ago, thanks to a grant, a community safety and wellbeing grant, that's being flowed through Victim Services. That grant comes up in March, and specifically, the anti-human trafficking work has been to create a table to address human trafficking in Gray and Bruce Counties. Human trafficking happens in Gray and Bruce Counties, but prior to this committee, there wasn't a single unifying table looking at what that looks like for us here, and looking at how the various jurisdictions within our twin counties are responding to preventing and meeting the needs of survivors of human trafficking. That work will culminate in March, when the grant money runs out, and we will close that with two events, on March 26th and 27th. On the evening of the 26th, there will be an open-to-community presentation with various survivors and experts on human trafficking, and the next day will be a forum for service providers and organizations implicated in this work to learn more and talk more about the work that we've done over what will be then a two-year project, asset mapping, developing Gray Bruce-specific screening protocols and tools, and making sure that organizations across our area are uniformly aware and trained up to the same standard, and that we've built those connections so that if someone who is experiencing human trafficking shows up through Victim Services, or through a police service, or through a women's shelter, that we have a vibrant network to get them the services and to meet their needs. We also have a senior safety subcommittee that's looking specifically at elder abuse. We recently received a grant from the Community Foundation to put out posters and do community training specific to elder abuse to raise awareness of that. As this morning's conversation shows, we have a significant population of seniors in our area, and they're vulnerable in many ways, and in ways that we don't historically talk about. We also have a table looking specifically at collaborative protocols and at public outreach and communications. Our ongoing projects include the anti-human trafficking committee that I've already described. We're gearing up right now to support the 16 Days of Activism with local campaigns releasing articles that profile local services and address various services over the course of those 16 days, from November 25th to December the 10th. In September, we released a snapshot, that I'll speak to in a moment, that looked at six months of statistics for domestic and sexual violence in Gray and Bruce Counties. We also, on Friday past, launched a youth creative contest where we're encouraging students in grades seven to 12 to create visual art or 60-second videos that raise awareness about healthy relationships, because we know that young people are at the highest risk of experiencing relationship violence and sexual violence, and that if we can start conversations that give them the tools that they need earlier in life, downstream, they won't experience as much pain, or perpetrate as much pain on each other. We also are gearing up to host documentary screenings. This fall, we supported the Sisters in Spirit events, both in Owen Sound through Mowikwadong, at Suggin, and at Naishingaming. And we also provide public outreach through media, social media, and are preparing for a vigil to mark December 6th this year. The snapshot, we released that publicly in September, and that showed the, a variety of statistics from January 1st to the end of June for 2018. During that time, there were 339 calls to police services related to domestic violence, which breaks down to just under two calls per day. During that same period, the Violence Against Women organizations, Women's House serving Bruce and Gray, and the Women's Centre, Gray Bruce, which hosts the local VAW crisis lines, they received an average of 26 calls per day during that time. Now, those calls are people who are experiencing abuse immediately, as well as people who have historically experienced abuse, who are reaching out now for support, community, counseling, community outreach. These statistics do not include crisis response and counseling provided through hospitals or private counselors. We released this snapshot as one community across Ontario, other communities have done similar snapshots as well, because we don't speak enough about the impact that domestic and sexual violence and gendered violence generally have on our community. This isn't something that happens to other people. This is something that happens to our family, our friends, our neighbors, our coworkers, our employees. You'll know through your human resources departments and the workplace harassment policies that we're all obligated to follow, that domestic violence can impact anyone, and that we need to be prepared to recognize it and to address it, no matter where it comes up. We also included in here statistics about the number of families accessing service through Bruce-Grey Child and Family Services, who, whose families are involved with that organization because of reports of, sorry, my mouth is getting dry here, late in the morning, because of domestic violence. We also know that there's a connection between marginalization and experiences of violence, and so we included in this snapshot the size of wait lists for housing locally, as well as, as well as the unemployment rate, because we know that people living in poverty don't have the same opportunity to leave violence if they're experiencing that in the home. If you don't have another roof to go to, you're not, there are barriers to leaving one, even if you're experiencing violence there. My apologies. We also, and it's one of the smaller font points there, during this six-month period, there was also a murder of a woman in Gray and Bruce Counties by her partner. Domestic and sexual violence are problems for Gray and Bruce Counties, and we all have a role in addressing it. And it isn't unique to Gray Bruce. Across Ontario, last year, there were 48 women killed. For those of you not familiar with OATH, the Ontario Association of Interval and Transition Housing Organizations, they release an annual femicide report each year. I encourage you to look into that organization if you're not already familiar. And that brings us to the National Day of Remembrance and Action on Violence Against Women, December 6th. Of course, it commemorates the murder of 14 women at La Cole Polytechnique, who were killed because they were women. In 1991, Parliament established a national day to mark that horrific event, and we're coming up to the 30th anniversary this year. As part of the National Day of Remembrance, it's a day to commemorate the victims, to reflect on the phenomenon of violence against women in our society, which hasn't gone away over the last 30 years. And to consider the women and girls for whom violence is a daily reality, to remember those who have died as a result of gender-based violence, and for communities to consider concrete actions that we can all take in the, to prevent violence in our communities. And those are actions and choices that even your policy decisions impact. So when we talk about access to transportation, access to safe housing, these are all factors that impact people's safety. We are marking December 6th this year, partnering with Georgian College to host a vigil at noon on December 6th in Owen Sound, because the shooting took place at a place of learning. We're partnering with Georgian College this year to mark that, and we invite everyone from across Gray and Bruce to join us there, to mark this significant anniversary. It is in partnership with Georgian, Violence Prevention Gray Bruce, Mowikwadong, the Women's Centre, Women's House, and the United Way. On December 6th, in the National Flag Protocol, that is a day where flags are flown on federal buildings at half-mast to recognize that day. It's one of a handful of days, the most recent of which was Remembrance Day as well. I am here today partly to request that, for Gray County, that the flags at county buildings and at the respective municipalities be flown at half-mast to recognize that significant anniversary and to symbolically recognize the importance of preventing gendered violence in our communities, as well as recognizing the impact that that violence has. That's the request for today. If you're, if the county generally, or if your respective municipalities are interested in marking the occasion in other ways, I encourage you to please reach out to me. We're happy to support any and all event planning that way. And that event, as I said, is part of our 16 Days of Activism campaign. The 16 Days of Activism are supported by the United Nations. It begins with the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women and ends on the International Day of Human Rights. I am also really excited to report here that OSDSS, the High School in Owen Sound, their leadership class is also taking on a 16 Days of Activism campaign, and we found that out yesterday. So that's a, that's a great thing. We need to start these conversations early because there is We need to start these conversations early, because there has been historically a culture of silence around gendered violence that says that if you experience it, it's your fault, that if there's violence in a relationship, that that belong, that's the business of the people in that relationship. And we know that that's just not true. We know that violence impacts generations at a time, and that it has a serious economic and social impact, as people who experience violence then struggle to heal from that and participate actively as healthy members of their community. We all have a role to play in ending violence against women, and working together is the key to do that. We're very excited to be part of the Community Safety and Wellbeing Planning Table that's, that's been convened, because domestic and gendered violence prevention is an integral part of the prevention part of that model, and, and that needs to take place at every step of the way. Please consider us as a resource, as you consider policies in the future that might involve or implicate issues of gendered violence, domestic violence, sexual violence. We're here as a table to support and to help, and there are experts in your community that are, that are well-positioned to provide expert and locally grounded input. Thank you for your time at the meeting today. I know that we're all eager to have a stretch and, and maybe get some food for our stomachs instead of just food for thought. I'm happy to answer any and all questions, to speak to any issues that might be, might be percolating away for you there, and, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Counselor Desai has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I have a few questions. One of, one of the things that you mentioned, Mr. Farmer, was the work, the work that you do around sex trafficking, or, or human trafficking, sorry. And the other thing you also mentioned was educating youth around what healthy relationships are. My question to you, Mr. Farmer, is one of the gateway to human trafficking amongst minors especially, is the issue of grooming. Is, is that something you undertake specifically to educate the youth in our communities about the dangers of grooming and how to recognize what is grooming and, and how, how to know when they're being groomed and who to reach out to when they feel they're being groomed?
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, so through the, through the context of the Anti-Human Trafficking Committee, for the public outreach materials that we're preparing, through the education that various partners are doing, including the OPP, including the coordinator of, of that committee, in terms of recognizing what human trafficking is, what the signs and, and symptoms of that might be, and what to look for, both if you're caring for children, but also looking amongst your peers, that's, grooming is absolutely a part there. So for those of you not familiar with that term, human trafficking is not as it may be portrayed in action movies where someone is kidnapped and then forced to be a slave in, in the sex industry there. The human trafficking is much more frequently, people are lured into that thinking that they're in a relationship. The, a common term for that is Romeo pimp, so someone who is, people who are targeted in that way are often feeling isolated, they're often misunderstood, the, their trafficker will come to them and, and create an attachment there through gifts, through making them feel understood and valued, through isolating them from the other people that they may have conflict with in their lives, and then create that attachment, apply them with gifts, and then tell them that they owe them something, and, and slowly transition them then into, into being, being sex trafficked. So that's, people who are experiencing trafficking often don't identify as being trafficked. They would identify as, as maybe doing sex work, but not as being trafficked. They wouldn't identify their trafficker as a trafficker, they would, or a pimp, they would identify them as, as their boyfriend. And so that knowledge and that awareness is key to build, because if you know those signs and, and you know what a healthy and unhealthy relationship is, then you can say, hey, my friend is showing up with all these gifts, but doesn't come out to hang out anymore, or is gone for periods of time and doesn't want to talk about where they've been, there are, there are red flags there. We also are, are, think that it's very important to draw a distinction between sex work and human trafficking, because often women who are engaging in sex work by choice are put in danger by policies that indiscriminately treat sex work and human trafficking as the same thing, where human trafficking is slavery. Human trafficking is people who are being coerced, who are being manipulated, who are being threatened into, into those actions, and who do not get any of the benefit of any of those things. It's a complicated issue, one that I could, we could speak with for days. If you're interested in learning more, I encourage you to keep an eye out and attend the forum at the end of March as well. Thank you for that question. It's an important one.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Another question that I have is, economics is a powerful driver in, in our world today. Has, has Violence Prevention Gray-Bruce considered during, during a study of, of the, the economic impact of domestic violence? Because as you mentioned, these women, in many cases, still do have jobs outside of, of their house. So is, is there a plan to do a study of that economic impact? And while I'm standing, I'll ask the second question as well. The statistics that you mentioned of domestic violence, do they include violence or abuse against youth, seniors, and other vulnerable demographics? Thank you.
Just writing down those questions so that I make sure I answer them. So Violence Prevention Gray-Bruce has an annual budget of $22,000. Our ability to conduct longer-term research that way is dependent on grant funding. That's currently beyond the scope of, of projects that we, that we're in a position to undertake at the moment. But that data exists on a federal level and at a provincial level. Specifically, in the late 2000s, there was a report put out by the, by the, the government of Canada looking at the economic impact of domestic violence, and it costs billions of dollars to the national economy. I'm happy to forward that information to the, the council if interested, because, and, and that manifests in a variety of ways, and the majority of that economic cost is borne by the people who experience that violence. But it's also borne by the public healthcare system, by the policing and justice system, by the, by the lack of then involvement in, in the economic system. If someone is, is subsequently traumatized, or their life is destabilized to, to the point where they can't show up regularly for a job, if they're, maybe if they've experienced physical violence and, and can't attend, or if they're moving from shelter to shelter seeking safety, it destabilizes people's lives and, and has a cascading impact. But as I said, the majority of that cost is, as the study that I referenced speaks to, falls on the individual themselves, who then needs to make up the, make up for additional payments if their abusive partner is, is using economic abuse against them, is not meeting their, like, meeting shared economic obligations. It's borne in counseling costs, it's borne in, in the loss of material possessions if someone is fleeing, fleeing a place and taking only what they can carry with them. It's a complex issue. The statistics that we reported were, in terms of those three hundred and thirty-nine calls, those are calls that the police services would have coded as domestic violence-related. So that's specifically within the coding there. That would not, to my knowledge, include violence against youth, although it, the discrimination between age there, I don't believe is, is broken out within those statistics.
Counselor Bartniki.
Through you, Mr. Warden. You've asked some really good questions, and if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to add a little bit. One is that forty percent of all OPP calls in Gray, Gray County are related to domestic violence, which I found extremely shocking. There is a cost for you. And the other is the description of what human trafficking really involved, really involves. And one thing that we have experienced in the town of Blue Mountain is human trafficking to fill the labor market. So where firms unknowingly, hotels and that sort of thing, hire companies that bring labor in to keep them going, and it turns out that those people are actually human slaves. So we had that in, in, in the Blue Mountains not too long ago, and fortunately, it was uncovered and it's been dealt with in a very great proactive way by all those places. But it's something we don't think about. And, and those signs that you learn to look for through the training that you're talking about in March are extremely enlightening if you have the chance to go. I think that we probably all have spotted somebody and we don't know it.
That means? Okay. If I may, Mr. Warden, the, we are specifically in our community looking at human sex trafficking, but the spectrum of human trafficking is, is broad. It's not simply a box where, yes, of course, we'll check that, that's human trafficking. There's a spectrum of exploitation, where people's choice, the extent to which they receive economic benefit from their labor, the extent to which they have the freedom to leave that job or not, is all implicated in how marginalized or vulnerable people are. As Counselor Bartniki said, in terms of human, like, labor trafficking, that, that runs a spectrum as well. But there are organizations that are in a position locally to support people who are experiencing a variety of types of trafficking, and, and we are working currently to expand our, the protocols that we host on our website that determine the community collaborative responsibilities of various organizations, to also include human trafficking requirements there. Just for the record, the Legal Aid Office, or the Gray-Bruce Legal Clinic, sorry, my apologies, the Gray-Bruce Legal Clinic is, is mandated to support people who are experiencing labor trafficking specifically. And, yeah, it's an important resource to be aware.
Okay, Counselor Desai, you're going to be very brief.
I, I'm always brief, Ms. Warden. I don't know what you're talking about. As my final comments, I'd like to thank Mr. Farmer for coming here today and making the presentation. Very eye-opening. Thank you, Counselor Bartniki, for the statistics on, on the domestic violence. One of the requests that Mr. Farmer made was with regards to lowering the, the county flag. I would, I would like to move that, that we do lower the county flag on December 6th in, in commemoration.
Sorry. So moved by Counselor Desai, seconded by Counselor McQueen, that the flag be lowered on December the 6th. It is my understanding that the current County Council, or County of Gray, flag lowering policy does not include this, so we do require the motion. So we have the motion on the floor. Any discussion? Can I call the que, oh, discussion?
Just briefly, I do remember that day very clearly, and, and I don't know those around the table, but it was certainly a horrific, horrific event that happened, and certainly thanks for bringing that forward.
Thank you. So I think we're ready to call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. Mr. Farmer, thank you very much for your presentation. It's, yeah? It's evident from your presentation that you're very passionate about your work. Thank you. Counsel, we are going to take a break for lunch, and then we'll come back.